I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:04 for the Thursday, November 12th, 2020 Library Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Hello, everybody. And again, I'm just gonna, before we proceed, I want to remind us all about the meeting protocols pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. This regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely and is being, well, it's being recorded, shall we say today, that it's being recorded. Limited staff are on site for the purpose of tonight's meeting and practicing appropriate physical distancing. Do we have public comments tonight?
There are no public comments.
So there are no public comments for tonight. And then, again, in an effort to just best facilitate dialogue and discussion, if you could just kind of, you know, either raise your hand or just get my attention during the meeting and when you're not speaking, if I can remind you all to just, if we can mute our microphone so we can not have so much background noise. And I think that's it. Any other questions or anything?
Sean, do you want to do a roll call of attendees?
Bianca Richards.
Present.
David Ewens.
Present.
Deborah Beadle.
Present.
Dr. Malina.
Present.
Annie Chang is unavailable, and I don't know if Mayor Joe will be joining us, but otherwise, we're all met.
Okay, great. And I don't think we have any presentations for this evening, and as Sean said, we had no public comments. So our first action item, did you all get to review the minutes of the last October 8th meeting? Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have one comment.
Yes, David.
Okay, on, under Item Number 7, Introduction of Services Update.
Yes.
If you can get there. In the last paragraph where it says, "There has not been much demand for community to reopen the library," my recollection was during the meeting Kathy stated that when people asked when the library was going to reopen, it would be explained to them and they were accepting of it. So I think it's a mischaracterization to say that it has not been much demand. I think, I think that, I think the community would love to have the library open.
We can rephrase that, reword that for sure.
Okay, that was it. That was the only comment I had.
We'll change it to reflect what you just said.
Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, David. Any other? I have a motion to approve of the minutes in a second.
Approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. There's a motion by David and a second by Dr. Malina to approve the October 8th minutes. Do we need a roll call for that, for the approval?
Yes, Sean, can you?
Yes. Bianca Richards.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Deborah Beadle.
Yes.
Dr. Malina.
Yes.
Wonderful, all approved?
Okay. And then, in your packet that Kathy sent out to you, you all should have gotten the request for approval of the Library Board of Trustees meeting scheduled for 2021. It, so hopefully you all, and it, it, you know, as usual, we'll be meeting once a month starting in January.
Sean, were there any exceptions to the rule of the second Thursday, or are they all just the second Thursdays?
I think the, a year from now, due to Veterans Day being on the, on a Thursday, that's the only one that got pushed to the third Thursday.
Okay, so it's a regular schedule other than November.
Okay, got it. Okay. Do we have to, do we have to take a vote on this?
You do.
Oh, okay. Is Sean gonna do the roll call or shall I?
I think someone needs to make a motion.
Oh, oh.
Make a motion to approve the dates.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Deborah. So there's a motion by Deborah and a second by David to approve the dates for the 2021 trustees' schedule.
Okay. Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Deborah Beadle.
Yes.
David Ewens.
Yes.
Dr. Malina?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, and our next action item is the request for approval of the library closure related to Thanksgiving and the city winter holiday schedule. And again, it was in your packet.
I can give you a little background on this. So last year was the first year that the, after the city went to a 4-10 work week schedule. So City Hall, all of the departments except for the library and public safety are on a 4-10. So when they created the memorandum of understanding with the employee association, it didn't account very well for those of us who are on a regular 5:40 work week. In any case, last year was the first year that the city was closed for, completely between Christmas and New Year's. But of course, the library, we didn't feel like we could be closed that long, and the MOU didn't provide enough days off for our staff to be closed that long because we're open Friday, Saturday, and used to be open Sundays. So last year, it worked out pretty well. We took our, basically, the staff are all entitled to three days during that period. And again, for the folks at City Hall who work a 4-10, that's all the days. For us, we work way more than that. So that's what the schedule is about. Basically, the staff are going to work a couple of days in that period, so both because we don't have enough days to take that whole period off, but also because we're not really comfortable closing the library for such a long length of time because the public, you know, needs services and needs their materials. So that's, that's what the schedule is about. They are going to work on the MOU the next time that it's up for negotiation to try to better define how this works for, for us and for any other department that's not on the 4-10 schedule. But really, the two pieces that, well, the three pieces that are really up to, up to you guys, one is allowing us to close early on the day before Thanksgiving. So that's one of the things. So Wednesday, November 25th, close at 5:00 p.m., and that's standard. We've done that for many, many years. And then the other two, actually, it's really only one, I think. It's the Saturday, December 26th. We want to, we would like to be closed that day, and we need your approval to do that. All the other dates are defined by the city's memorandum of understanding. So the only two things really that we need to have you guys approve are the early closure before Thanksgiving on the 25th of November and the closure on Saturday, September, December 26th.
I have a question. I don't know if Kathy, if you can answer this, if you or Sean know anything. Going forward, is the city, you think the city is gonna continue with the, the four days closure?
I don't know. The MOU is, is for, when does it?
What does it go, yeah, how long does it go?
I'm gonna look right now. Sorry, off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can tell you pretty quickly. Give me one second. The MOU is 20, let's see. 2019 through 2022, so effective through the end of the fiscal year, so June 30th, 2022 is the end. So they're gonna renegotiate at that time. I don't know that they would be making any changes to anything like the 4-10 before then, but I don't know, that wouldn't really be my purview. But they are working on putting together a side letter for the Employee Association for this holiday stuff, both for this year and for next year. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So is there any discussion or concerns with what, the staff report from Kathy? So we're all, we're all okay with the early closure on Wednesday, November 25th, and the Saturday close for the whole day on December 26th?
I'll move approval.
Move a second?
I'll second, sorry.
All right, so there's a motion from Dr. Malina and a second by Deborah to approve the winter holiday schedule with the two special, the Wednesday, November 25th, early closure, and the Saturday, December 26th closure.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
David Ewens?
Yes.
Deborah Beadle?
Yes.
Dr. Malina?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes all the action items, and now we're going on to the discussion items. So, this is my first time doing an annual report, so as you can all see, I started the annual report, and I am happy for everybody to give me edits, changes. So I kind of just sort of did an overall feel of what we've been doing, highlighting some of the things that, from our work plan from 2020. So, and did you all get a chance to kind of look over the draft of the annual, and this is due, what, January?
Well, yeah, so in your packet was sort of the timeline that relates both to the annual report and the work plan, so we could maybe just go over that quickly so everyone kind of is on the same page. So this meeting, we're just sort of reviewing Bianca's draft to give any feedback to her so that she can make any adjustments that you all feel are needed. We're gonna talk a little bit about the work plan today. Then in December, we finalize the work plan, but we don't approve it. We wait to approve it until if and until there are new trustees in January, which there may or may not be, but that's when we'll approve the work plan. But in December, we will approve the final annual report. So this meeting is really, that's why it's a discussion item, not an action item. It's just an opportunity to kind of show you where we are so far and if you have any feedback that you want to give to Bianca now. And then, in January, we approve the work plan, and in February, the Commissioners Congress will happen, and it will be done virtually this year, so I don't know what that will be like exactly. But for those of you, for Mario, I suppose, who was not with us last year, they do an event for the last three years, Mario, to all commissioners from all commissions and boards get together, and they had done it in person, and it was kind of an opportunity to just learn about each commission and kind of their highlights for the year and what their plan was for the coming year. So they will do that virtually, and that's February 23rd, so mark your calendars for that. And then at the March 3rd City Council meeting, the city will, the council members will receive and file all of the annual reports. And the reports for the Commissioners Congress, you might remember, are in a different format. So what I'll do is take Bianca's report and pull it into the format that they would like us to use, which is basically like three highlights and three work plan items.
Right, right, right.
So that's the timeline.
We closed, nobody got sick.
Yeah, right.
Buy books.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, the work plan is just sort of survive this terrible time.
And in my, in the annual report, I tried to highlight some of the positive things like, you know, amongst all of this, we got some work done, you know, we got, you know, the library takeout, the one city, one story, the Ray Bradbury. So Kathy, do we want to discuss this, or do we want, or if people have comments, do they just want to email me? How do we?
I think they could just email you. I mean, if anybody has any comment that you want to share now, feel free, but otherwise, yeah, just email Bianca. And then, there's some parts that Bianca wanted me to fill out a little bit, so she and I will work on that in advance of December, and then we'll have a final version for your approval in December. I think it's great, Bianca, you did a great job, and it actually is sort of nice to stop for a minute and see that, that a lot was accomplished and the goals that we had were met, so that's exciting.
Yeah, and I think it's a good recap of everything that's happened because of COVID. So this isn't our normal report. It's very how we handled COVID, so I thought that was excellent.
Right, and I don't know, Ellen, if you wanted anything more about the Friends? So I did want to put in, you know, mention about the Friends, and so, yeah. So people, if you want to give me, you know, read it over, and please give me comments, like you heard Kathy, then we'll work on this to finalize it. Okay, thank you for that then. And then, the work plan, did you, did we get, was there a work plan that you sent us?
No, because really, this is just an opportunity to discuss a little bit what, what you might think you want to focus on. I mean, obviously, I think we're rolling over the policy review because we're not done with that at all, so that will definitely be on the work plan again. I've wanted to, and I think the city has some interest, and the former city manager did, and I think the interim city manager sees the need as well, for all of the commissions to look at their, their charge and their ordinance to make sure that it's, you know, concurrent and makes sense. And I think that that would be useful for us. I think that, you know, the state statute that dictates what this body does is very broad, and then our ordinance is also pretty broad. I think it, I just think it might be worth our, worth the board's time and the library's time to, to take some time to look at that and make sure that the ordinance is what it should be and that we are all on the same page about it. So that might be something for your work plan, is just to kind of maybe just, I don't know what you would call it, revisit, review, review charge, something like that. So that's something to think about. You might want that on your work plan for next year.
Could we, maybe for something like that, could we dedicate, like, maybe not a special meeting, but could we dedicate a meeting just for doing something like that?
Yeah, I think you would probably, we would, yeah, we could dedicate a special meeting, and you probably, we'd probably want to get someone that has familiarity with the, with the state statute and, and, you know, kind of help us with that. I don't know if the city attorney would do that, or if there's somebody else out there that does that kind of thing. So I'm not sure how that would look, but it probably would be good to have an attorney who can just guide, make sure that whatever the board is, is thinking about, it fits with the statute.
Okay.
So that's, that's my, one idea I have for something for the board to have on your work plan. But honestly, other than the policies and that, I don't have a lot of ideas this year, and that is partly, I think, because of COVID. You know, there's just so many unknowns about what things are gonna look like in the coming year. But it's really, you know, what is the board interested in focusing on, and what does the board want to spend their time on? So that's really a conversation for you guys to have and think about. And again, we don't have to decide today. In December, we would talk about it more formally, hopefully, and have, have a list of some ideas, and then prepare to vote on it in January.
Are other entities looking at, like, this is, this pandemic is new for all of us, so going forward, you know, this could happen again in five years, 10 years, 20 years, but it would be nice to have maybe policies or practices kind of in place so that we knew what to follow. I'm sure everybody's having to go through this, you know, health, everybody. But I think we need to start writing down everything that we did and didn't do or needed to do, and maybe, I don't know, I don't know about codify it, but put it in writing somewhere so that if another emergency ever happened again, you would have access to it.
Well, Kathy, did you have an emergency preparedness plan?
Our emergency preparedness plan is, is very, very out of date, and that's something that's on our to-do list to work on. So that kind of goes hand in hand with this. You know, this is almost a sort of a subset of the general emergency preparedness plan. But yeah, that's on our to-do list as staff, is to work on that, but we could certainly, you know, use your help with that and involve you in that to whatever extent you're interested in being involved in that. But it hasn't been looked at in a long time. So we've, we've gotten away from a lot of the practices that used to be, many years ago, you know, they had a monthly walkthrough of the building to check, you know, remind everybody where the emergency exits are and where the fire extinguishers are, and they haven't done that in 10 years, you know, it just hasn't happened. So there's a lot of things that we need to work on that plan.
Yeah, we may not hope that we don't have a pandemic again, but it certainly could happen where we have several days of earthquakes.
Right, exactly. I mean, just everything from where we, where we meet outside and whether, what should be in our emergency kits, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff that is not in the forefront of staff's mind because that plan is, it would be a good exercise for us. I mean, we need it, but it's also, I think, you really just have to dedicate the time to it to keep people kind of current on how to, what we're supposed to do when these things happen. So that's a good idea, Bianca, and that definitely could be a subset of, of, you know, of an emergency plan. What do we do in this particular type of emergency?
Oh, yeah, and then like going forward, when we're buying like furniture and equipment, is maybe thinking of things that are more portable, because then, in case of emergency or something, and we have to, like, you guys are having to move furniture around or move the computer stations around, so maybe we need to think of ways where we can be a little bit more portable. I don't know, like with purchase orders or designs, I don't know. It's just, it's just an idea. An idea. Any other?
So a question. Your city employees, and you must also be subject to OSHA regulations?
Yes.
So...
Mario, you're...
I'm sorry. My question was, how do we know if the library personnel and the library comply with OSHA?
I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, we're not, I would think that the, the city, I guess, in what, in what context? I mean, what part of OSHA are you thinking about? Like, you know, workplace safety, or what kind of things?
Yeah, there are all kinds of requirements for workplace safety, you know, the fire drills, I don't know how often you're doing fire drills.
Right.
I know that we had to do fire drills periodically to make sure that we were in compliance, we had to do those drills. And there were all kinds of other little things, like, you know, you couldn't have cords strung across the floor, and you had to have stripes on stairways and things like that. But that is a kind of part of a safety and an emergency plan. I'm sure you have an emergency plan for what to do if there's a fire, if there's a flood. Those are the kinds of things that libraries always worry about, you know? But I think that, to Bianca's point, we have now established, whether we think about it formally or not, a whole bunch of policies and procedures on what to do during the pandemic. And we know that we have a pandemic of some sort every 20 to 30 years. You know, we had a big pandemic with H1N1 flu. Nothing that's been this severe, but I think writing down and making a formal record of the things that you have done to adapt to the situation for the future, you know, would be a great thing, so that someday when it happens again and somebody says, "Oh, my gosh, we gotta close the library, we want to maintain the circulation, what do we do?" And someone said, "Well, back in 2020."
Right.
They wrote this policy, and this is what they did in 2020, and we'll just adopt it for, you know, 2040.
Yeah. That would be great. I mean, and I think we're, we're partway there. You know, we have our overall plan, but I know that Barb Posner, who's our Support Services Manager, and so she oversees all of those circulation features, you know, a lot of stuff was happening very quickly, and decisions were being made very quickly, and I know she's been taking some time to try to go back and actually document, "All right, so we, you know, we set the, the fine limit to this, and we did this." Like, she's kind of noting exactly what she did on the back end, so we can, we can put that all together and have kind of a guiding document for the future to follow. And as far as OSHA compliance, that's a good question, and I, you know, I think that I'll have to talk, I have, I mean, I have shown our emergency plan to the fire chief, and he said, "Oh, it looks okay, you know, maybe just update a few things." But I don't know if we're in compliance with all of OSHA's requirements. I don't know what they are. I probably should, and I don't, which is, again, why we need to go through this process of looking at our, our plan and making sure that it's up to date and accurate. So I will look into that, Mario, because we're, we're not doing fire drills. The city isn't doing fire drills that I, that I know of. I know in my last city, you know, periodically, the whole city would do a fire drill at the same time, and I don't think we've done that since I've been here, so I don't know who's in charge of making sure all the departments are in compliance with OSHA regulations.
Well, she have things like hazardous materials, you know, and I was, I was always surprised, I thought hazardous materials, but you do have hazardous materials. One of the things that was a hazardous material, you may not have it anymore, was whiteout.
Yeah, yeah, all the glues. I mean, one of the things with the products we've had to get for COVID, you know, that's again, something I'm, we're not experts on hazardous materials, so, you know, we have everything that we purchased and are using, we've posted, you know, the sheets that you have to post that, that come with the product, and, but yeah, there's a lot of things like that that are not really in our area of expertise, and so making sure that we have the proper information and have things posted where it's supposed to be posted, all of that kind of stuff, is important, and I think it is the kind of thing that it's easy to, to let slide a little bit, and then, of course, that's just what you don't want because then something happens and you're not ready. So we don't want that to happen. So that's been on our kind of, I mean, my to-do list since I became director, is to try to, to try to work on that, but we haven't had time to do it, but we really need to make time, and I think we're getting to a point where we can make time. You know, we had a lot of things that, a lot of catch-up to do, even just in terms of filling vacant positions and getting people on board who could do the work that needed to be done. And now that we have those people, it's taken things off my plate that I now don't have to do because we have people who can do it. So that, in theory, would be hopefully freeing me up to take the lead on some of these other kinds of projects. And then COVID, of course, came and kind of took all of our time, you know, away from things we would have been working on, you know? But I think that that needs to be a goal for this year, is to get through our, our emergency plan, and also we can have a piece of it that's devoted to this kind of pandemic situation. What are the steps that we took? What, what do we need to do? What are the best practices? And there's a lot of information out there about that for libraries, you know, all of the libraries have sort of been concurrently developing these things, but also, you know, a lot of dialogue has gone on between different libraries, and there's guidance from the state library, and, you know, there's a lot of cooperation around this, but we do need our own, I think, document that will help us next time, if there is a next time.
Well, it, it sounds like, it sounds like we've got three areas. We've got, you know, we'll continue with our policy review, we'll look at actually our role as the Library Board of Trustees, the commission, and then this emergency kind of plan with kind of reviewing and laying down all the steps that we did for the pandemic.
Yeah.
To me, that's...
That's plenty.
Fellow members, what is, how does that feel to you for an action plan for the, for the year?
I think the plan sounds good, but I just want to say something. It's really important for us to make sure that we're complying with OSHA and with safety and all of these things, and I know that our first priority in the library typically is to maintain circulation and make sure everybody's getting their books, getting their things in and out. If we need to slow down the circulation a little bit, or say to the staff, "We're gonna take one day this week to work on policies and procedure and safety manuals and all that stuff," it would be time well spent, and if you delay somebody getting their book by a day or two, I would be in favor of that, because I just want to make sure that those things don't slip, because if we do have a problem, we don't want to be unprepared. Because if we do have a problem, um, we don't want to be unprepared.
Yeah.
And, you know, you can wait a day or two to get your books. But I don't want to see any problems with safety or, or OSHA compliance.
And I appreciate that Mario, because that is part of the challenge. You know, when you're open, you know, providing a public service seven days a week, we can't even have a staff meeting. I mean, it's, it's almost impossible to, to have everybody together and, and have these kind of conversations and work time. So typically in the past Mario, we've had um one day a year. That's like a, it's been called a training day um and been used for different things. Um, last year, we didn't, actually last year we didn't have one because we normally do it. Well, since I've been here, we've been doing it in the, in like January, February. And then COVID came, so we haven't had it. Um, but the year before, we kind of used it to meet and talk about our new service model, which was our single point of service desk. And that was, you know, kind of a change management focus because staff had a lot of uh trepidation about this big change and what that was going to mean. So we spent our time not so much on training as on kind of staff development and, and working together toward um making this big change in the service model, which isn't really that big of a change, but people felt like it was a big change. Um, so I would, I would love to, to close the library and have a day where we could all focus on this. So knowing that we have your support for that is, is really helpful. So maybe we'll start thinking now that things are sort of settling down a little bit. Maybe we can start thinking about a day that we can do that. And that could be a day that we devote to um, to this project and this piece of work.
Yeah, I, I agree with that Kathy, but, but I think the thing that you have to do as well is you have to set up a kind of culture. And maybe what you could do is start to leverage the more senior people that you have been quiet over the last year. And that they uh, uh, you know, changes of uh shifts or whatever you call them, that they then spend 10, 15 minutes with people who are just coming in and say, you know, here, here's a new thing we just implemented. Or here, here's where the, let's take a walk around and make sure everyone knows where the bar is. Things like that. The, the problem with just making it one day a year is you go to the training and then back to work.
Right, right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a training. I don't think it'd be so much a training as, as an opportunity to develop that plan as a group and make sure that, and then yeah, part of the plan is that you do a monthly walkthrough and then you, you need to stick with it and continue to do that.
Does it have to be, do you have to develop the plan as a group and then how big is the group? Could you not, could you not, could you not make it, you know, your senior staff and tell us one of these senior staff that you take care of this part of the OSHA plan? You take care of this part of the OSHA plan, whatever you want to call it. I mean, and, and then as part of that, the rollout strategy is then defined as to how the rest of the staff find, you know, get to be more than that. So, so maybe once a month, there's a 10 minute huddle. In which, you know, some people get together and they're told, go, go over it very quickly, different areas and things like that.
Yeah.
Just a stretch.
Yeah.
Kathy, are you, are you then not having any kind of a staff meetings at all?
No, we meet. It's just really, really hard to do.
Okay.
No, we meet. Um, the, the different teams meet weekly. Um, for, you know, smaller teams meet about different things. I meet with the senior staff weekly. And then uh the, the challenge is getting the full-time staff together. It's a little bit easier now that we're not open on Sundays, but it's still a challenge. Um, but it's, it's easier that now that we're not open to the public. So I think we met last a couple of weeks ago. But um it has, it's, it's a struggle to get an in-person meeting with all of the full-time staff, much less any of the part-time staff.
So um, uh, uh, my fellow trustees, are we okay? Kind of just using this as a jumping board of thinking of our, the work plan for the library that I mentioned, the policy review, the, looking at the Board of Trustees, our uh responsibilities. And then this kind of bigger OSHA, safety, emergency plan. And then making sure the steps of what we all did to, to adapt to this situation is all kind of written down as our, the work plan.
I would say that's one component of, of the things that we could have there for next year. Um, I would also like to see some things that are more uh community facing or beneficial to the community. I understand that, you know, we want to have a safe, secure library. But there's going to be some uh follow-on that how we rebuild, you know, people coming back in and what programs need to be re-energized and so on.
I, I would just mention um that the strategic plan uh goes through 2022. So we're gonna, you're, we're, you're gonna spend quite a lot of time, I think, in 20, um, you know, starting in 2022 on that process. So I don't want to, I don't, I, I don't think I want to do an extensive kind of community outreach thing now just because I know that that's coming soon. Um, but certainly we, we need to reach out to the community and find out, you know, are we meeting needs and, and whatnot on an ongoing basis. But I do want to remind you that the strategic planning is coming.
Well, when would we have to start? Do we need to just start doing that like six months before or a year?
I, I don't know. I think that um this would be my first strategic planning and at lea- at least, you know, as, as the lead. Um, so I think that it depends on how you want to approach it and how, how we want to do it. Do we want a consultant? Do we want to do something different? There's some different models that we can look at and choose from. Um, you know, the last time you did it, it was a very kind of standard. There was a consultant, you did the community meetings, people said what they wanted. But it was very, I think, as is often the case, um, the feedback was from a very small pool of people, not from a very representative group of users. Um, so maybe thinking about how to improve on that this next time. Um, but yeah, I, I think we would just, it would start in January 2022. Um, with, you know, what do we want it to look like? What do we, what are the steps? Do we need to hire someone? You know, kind of figuring that out. But also um early enough that we budget for it if we need funds for it, so.
Well, then we, well, then we know then in 2022, that'll be one of the, the work plans will be the strategic.
Yeah, that'll probably be the, a lot, yeah.
Okay.
But and I, just to Mario's point, I, why don't I plan to um in December, at the December meeting, try to at least give you some update on, on our OSHA compliance and, and where we are. I can share the emergency plan that we do have with you as a starting point so that you can see what it covers and, and maybe have some input about what it should have that it doesn't have. Um, so that I can at least give you an update on where we stand now. So you're not too worried about that. So I can do that in December.
Bianca?
Yes.
Kathy raises a really good point. We probably can't wait until January of 2022 to start on a strategic plan. We probably need to think about in 2021, what kind of budget are we gonna need for the plan? Do we need to hire a consultant? So that should probably go into our work plan, sort of a, a, a plan for a plan.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, you know, the, it definitely needs to be in the budget because the budget runs from June or July of mid 21 through mid 22. So you really need it in the, in the budget for the 21, 22 budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, okay, so then let's add that to the, the 20 uh 20 uh kind of, the, the 2021 work plan then will be kind of pre-strategic planning and making sure that it's covered in the budget too.
Yeah, so that would be, you know, like February, March, kind of coming to some idea of how much money we need to ask, ask the city for.
Yeah.
And I can look back and see what we, what we spent last time. It might be a little tangled up with last time with the operation study because I used the same consultant for the operation study in the strategic plan. And I don't know that, we'll have to look at the invoices and see if we can tell how much we spent last time.
And what year was that, the last time?
Um, that was like 2015, 2016, that the operation, the operation study was published in 2016. And the strategic plan is 2017 to 2022. So it all kind of went hand in hand.
David, David, were you on the um, the Library Board of Trustees then?
Um, no, I wasn't.
None of us, okay. So we have no. No historical knowledge.
No, but, but the, if, I think if we went to the consultant Kathy and asked them and start to proceed that, you know, we're thinking about it again, you know, they may be able to give you a, a rough estimate of they, of what they held program.
Yeah, we could ask him, sure. I mean, we should have the invoices, um, so we should be able to look it up too. And the staff, of course, the seat, all, um, all the staff, except for me, were here for that process. So they have a good familiarity with that last round.
That's, that's all the historical knowledge. Okay, good, okay. Well, thank you. I'm glad we um, I'm glad we talked about that. So that'll be then, uh, we'll put that into the 2021 uh library work plan also. So then it looks like we've got the kind of four things that we're going on.
So we'll write that up for December too, so we can look at it one more time. And then again, in, in January, um, that's when you guys actually adopt it.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions or concerns in regards to the work plan? All right. So I think that gives us a good start. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Um, and then our next discussion item. Um, as, as you know, um, I sent everybody out an email in regards to um kind of preparing ourselves for the new slate of officers. And I did get feedback from uh David and from uh Deborah. Um, Kathy, did you get Deborah's email also?
Um, I was out, so I did not. Sean, did you see it?
Uh, I did not.
Okay.
I think Deborah, uh.
I might not have sent it to Sean. I only sent it to you, Bianca. I sent it to you and to Kathy. I should have copied Sean.
That's okay.
Yeah. Um, well, uh, uh, I, I mean, Deborah, you want me to say something or do you want to?
It's up to you. I mean, I basically, the, I, I will just say basically I'll say that I'm gonna continue through the end right term, which is the end of this year.
Okay.
And then I'm not gonna continue in Janu- come January.
Okay, understood. You have a, a lot with a new job.
Right. Yeah, so Deborah has a new job. So Deborah will um be with us. So then her last meeting will be in December.
Yes.
December of this year.
Okay.
And, um, and I know we're a small board, so we probably don't need to have a big nominating committee. And we, you know, we, we tend to just kind of nominate each other. And um, but we do need to um think about a new slate of officers. And uh, December 2nd, I believe, is when we get a new, the city council and then the mayor. And uh, then the mayor assigns the liaisons of the council members. So I'm not too sure what council member we'll be getting in the new year. Um, and as usually at this, our slate of officers are the president, the vice president and the secretary. And uh, if no one is rushing to be president, I can do president one more year. I'm fine with that because I'm kind of getting the hang of it. So it will be easier probably for me for next year. So I'm, unless anybody else wants to do it, I'm willing to um continue on with the presidency. And at this, uh, Deborah, what, were you, did you have a position?
Not this year. I did not.
That's right. You asked not to have a position because you were getting that new job, so. And then I think um Annie is our.
Secretary.
Secretary.
And.
David, you were our vice president, right? Yes. So on. How do we?
Well.
And I, I haven't, I didn't speak to Annie. Um, I didn't get any response back from Annie. Um, and I didn't get any response back from Mario. But I mean, you guys knew that we were needing to come up with some positions, so.
Yeah, you know, Bianca, I, I come back to what I found worked best was talk to people individually, one-on-one.
Okay.
And, you know, and then from that, if you said, what's, you know, where, where it's headed.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, I don't think we need a, a nominating committee per se. That's, I, I just, I just want to avoid um springing it on people in, in a meeting. You know, I think like David says, you just kind of, if you can talk to some people offline to figure it out so that when we come to the meeting in January, you can put the slate out and everyone, no one's gonna be surprised by what they're being, what they're being asked to do.
Mario, I'll be giving you a call later on and then I'll call up Annie because I did speak to David and then I spoke to Deborah.
And just, just so you know, I, I talked to the city clerk because normally the city clerk will reach out to commissioners and trustees whose terms are ending. Um, and David's term ends um this December. So once the mayor is appointed on December 2nd, she's gonna reach out to David and all the other commissioners and trustees to, I, to find out if he wants to um be considered again. And then the mayor makes those decisions. So David, you should be getting, um, Maria's office should be reaching out to you after December 2nd.
Okay. Deborah, did I hear you correctly that, that you're not going to continue next year? You're, you're leaving this December?
Yes, yes.
Okay, before the end of your term?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that, that also would need to be communicated to, to, to uh.
But aren't they two-year terms?
No, they're three years.
Three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we'll, so what will happen is the, the mayor uh will, will fill that position, you know, to, to complete the term. And then um if that person wants to continue, they, you know, the, the mayor can plan to reappoint them for the full term the next year if they would like to.
And, and Annie and Mario, they started, so they have two more years, right? Right, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we'll, Deborah, we'll let the city clerk know. You don't need to reach out to them. We can communicate that for you.
All right, but then, then I'll, then I'll reach out and I'll give a call to Annie and to um Mario. Then we'll do some more talking offline. Okay.
Sounds good.
And then I'll bring that, I'll bring that back to the December meeting. Okay, that's um, I think that's all for the dis- uh, for the discussion items, right, yeah? Okay. So we'll move on to communications. Um, I have no, no communicate, all of my communications had to do with the agenda, so I'm, I'm fine. I have no other communications. Board, um, any board members? Any communication for the board members?
Um, yeah, I, I have one. Um, I attended the unveiling of the uh property window. And uh, it, I, I think Kathy that, you know, given, given all the circumstances we had, that that was very well put together. Um, I thought Tim did a great job in terms of what he did and going over the history, leading up to it.
Yeah.
And then, and then when uh, uh, he gave you the nod to turn the lights on inside, there was a, you might not have heard it because you were inside, but there was a, there was a wow.
Yeah.
And a, a wow and applause went around the, around the uh, the audience. And, and I'm glad we did it on Thursday night because we had a number of people gathering at the, the market to see what was going on. And I think we think, I think it was very well received in, in that once the, you know, the formal presentation had ended, a awful lot of people, you know, wanted to come up and look much closer and talk to Tim and it, it worked very well given all of the problems we have in not congregating. But, but I, I think he did a wonderful job and, and Tim as well. If you have an opportunity to congratulate him on giving it, giving a ray of hope.
I will.
To people that there are, there is gonna be things after this pandemic.
Yeah, he was.
That's all I'm going to report. Go ahead Kathy.
I was gonna say, thank you. And yes, he was really happy that we were able to get it done by Halloween, which is what he really wanted to do. And he is a very eloquent speaker about his work and his ideas. So it's really, um, he just does a great job talking about, about it. So I'm glad that you guys all got to be there. I think that um our staff person, our librarian Cynthia is working on a, a video. Not a long one, but a short one that includes some of the footage from the studio visit and some of the footage of the installation and some photos and stuff. So once that's ready, you know, we'll, we'll have that on the YouTube channel. And we can also, we, we're not, haven't done it yet, but we'll have a, some information on the website about the work. Um, so people can go to that page and learn about the, the windows.
Yeah, it really was beautiful. And Ron and I showed up when it was darker because I really wanted to see the light through the windows and it was just gorgeous. And I know I spoke with um uh Diana Mahmoud, um mayor pro temp. And she and I, and I think we've talked about this too. I'm hoping that we, um, whoever it is, the we, uh, we can get a plaque or something on the outside uh, up on the balcony.
Yeah, Sean, Sean looked up for me. Yeah, Sean, Sean looked up for me the vendors we've used before for outdoor plaques. So I have an email sitting here with some, some people, but I haven't reached out, we haven't reached out to them to get pricing. Um, and we have to figure out what it's gonna say. So yeah, we need to do that. And we need an inside, um, you know, object label too, so the people from inside will know about it.
Yeah, the inside and the outside. Yeah. And if, those of you who haven't seen the window, I really highly recommend that you just take a walk up there or just the next time you drive by, it really is gorgeous. Thanks, David, for mentioning that, yeah.
And thank you guys for supporting.
Kathy, while, while we're talking about planning, I don't know where the city stands in terms of doing the library tree. If they've done it, I'm not sure where they put it.
They have not done it. Um, I don't remember the last I told you. So I reached out to, to planning. And the company that does that plaque for them, um, the, the, the mold was thrown away. And so they need to re, the, the co- the company changed hands and the mold was thrown away. Some, it's a whole thing. And so again, that's not our, it's the planning departments. They're the ones who make those plaques. We might pay for it, but that's their thing. So I have to check with them, you know? They're, they're, they're just swamped with work and I haven't had traction on, on getting that settled.
It's a little mulligan thing, Kathy.
I'll reach out again. It's one of the, it's, it's one of these things that's in the back of my mind. And I wake up in the night sometimes thinking about that plaque, you know? It's just one of those many things that's going on and on and on and on. And you just wish it could be wrapped up. So I'll put it on my to-do list to check in with them again and see if they've made any progress. Because that was where it stood most recently was that they need to recreate that mold. Um, and I don't know that that has happened. And I don't, yeah, so, uh, that's, thanks for the reminder. That's a good reminder. Definitely, I haven't asked about, about it in a while.
Any other comments, David? Was that all you had? Any other comments from?
That was all I had.
And I know, um, I don't think, uh, Bob Joe, he didn't join us. So there's no city council liaison tonight. Um, and Ellen, Ellen from the Friends of the Library.
Yeah, um, just a couple of things. Um, Andy Littman reached out to me. Um, and he's going to be doing an article about, uh, uh, organizations that have been affected financially from the pandemic. And so I'll be answering, he has a list of questions, so I'll be answering on behalf of the Friends. Um, I, I think that I, at this point, I probably should give you a little update just so there's no, um, misinformation regarding the restoration concerts and the, uh, concert series that was canceled. And so as I mentioned before, for a number of reasons, did not support going forward with the, um, with the summer festival. And then they found a new, uh, sponsor. But out of that came some other issues. We knew that they had, uh, gone out to, um, solicit money. And they had raised about, uh, $63,000 from donors, um, that were earmarked for the festival. So, I mean, we knew that that wasn't our money, um, and that wasn't an issue about returning, except we needed the donor's permission because they were given out of charitable trust in, in 2019. That became an issue. But what became an issue for us was that they raised, um, approximately after paying all their costs, there was $22,000 left over that were raised strictly from ticket sales. And, um, I don't know that, if you know, that they raised $120,000 and were not gonna give us anything. We finally convinced them, uh, uh, as a committee of the Friends, using every, um, yeah, how do I say that? They used all of our, our stuff as nonprofit. They got the library room, the community room for free, all this stuff. So anyway, $22,000. Um, they wanted that also. And they were demanding that we turn over $83,000. So I felt that it was my fiduciary duty, um, and I reached out. And we met with a, uh, an attorney who specializes charitable, um, giving and trusts. And he advised us that, you know, what we knew that we would have to give back the 63 because it was earmarked for that, which we had.
Ellen, Ellen, um, so this is a matter for, for your not-for-profit?
Yes.
And this is a public meeting. Do you want to share all this with the public right now?
Thank you. Okay, maybe not.
Especially if you have a lawyer involved?
Okay.
I want to make a public record. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. So we'll just say that the matter is resolved. Thank you, Mario. So yes, the matter is resolved. But I just want, um, I just want people to know that it, it was in the best interest of the Friends. So, um, going forward, the restoration concerts are still in place. It was just that particular entity that we are no longer.
Got it.
Got it? Okay. Uh, the next thing is out of that, out of all this, uh, we are, uh, revamping, um, our board and working on our new, new bylaws to, um, with that. And, and I think that they will, uh, present, uh, our new positions at our next meeting on next Thursday. So kind of moving along and our nominating committee will be meeting and looking for a new slate of, you know, officers. So I think that's it for now. Oh, our fundraiser has done really well. We're over $10,000. We are short quite a bit of money. The budget committee, um, met and, and what we projected, we are, um, out. But out of the funds that we have left over from the rest, the, the concert series, we have that, plus the $10,000, we're in fairly good shape. Our budget's in good shape. So we've met with Kathy to see about their wishes and, and hopefully we can fulfill, um, and still, um, pay for all the things going forward, like summer reading, tutor.com. So I think we're pretty confident that. The only thing that we question still is the bookstore. Uh, we basically zeroed that out for 2021 in our budget because we just don't see that the, um, the committee's really comfortable yet. And then the library's not open for us to do anything and sort books. So until that happens, we're just thinking that we won't have any, any funds from the bookstore.
Ellen.
Yes. The donation, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Bianca.
I was just, i- is the donation, uh, gonna just continue on? There's no deadline for it, is there? Is it just gonna be an ongoing emergency?
Yeah. I think that's kind of, uh, died down now because we asked, what will start happening is, and it should have been happening, but I don't know, we'll do it quite yet, is our membership drive. So that's the other source of, uh, of revenue for us. Um, yeah. So I'm certain. Kathy?
That's okay. I was just gonna say, Ellen, remember, I think at the last Friends meeting, we talked about the idea of opening up the bookstore through the emergency exit right by the bookstore. And I think that's very feasible if there are volunteers willing to work up there. So I know I sent volunteer applications to a few people who said, oh, they might be interested in doing that. So we should pursue that if you're interested in doing that. Um, you know, the bookstore is stocked already. There's a ton of stuff in there. And, um, you know, if we just opened Saturdays from 1:00 to 5:00 or Thursday nights during farmer's market from X to Z, you know, just a set number of hours, you might be able to bring in some money. Um.
Our conversation during our budget meeting, um, it, that it is a conversation I guess I'll have to have with the bookstore again because it didn't seem like they're moving forward. I don't want to, um, step on anybody's toes.
Understood.
Yeah, so, um.
Understood.
That was a huge conversation that we had. It didn't seem like that they were moving forward. So maybe I will get the ball rolling on that. So yeah, because I, I mean, I told you I would volunteer. It gave me something to do of sitting there. And, and we heard that usually one person comes in at a time anyway.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be very, it's very feasible to control the traffic and do it. So I think that, um, if it, if it's something the bookstore committee is comfortable with, and that's, I, yeah, that's totally the question that has to be addressed, you know? You don't want to feel like you're stepping on their toes, but, um, and I know they have many volunteers that aren't comfortable working. But if, if they're comfortable letting other people staff the bookstore, then we could definitely do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I will bring that up again at our, our meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
That's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. And, uh, David, the trustee liaison to the Friends, any other comments?
Not really. I, I just want to say I did, I did attend the, the meeting. And, uh, uh, the whole thing that relating to the Vienna concert, I think Ellen did an absolutely wonderful job of steering it through a, uh, difficult, difficult meeting. And it came out very well indeed. So.
Oh, thank.
Good to hear, Ellen.
That was, yes, thank you. I really, that really, I really appreciate that because it was very hard.
Yes, I could tell. But it came out fine.
Great. Thank you so much.
And I think then.
That's me.
Kathy, you're.
Yeah, so let's see, um, so fine, the fine free recommendation is, um, still on the agenda for next week at council. Um, Annie, I believe, got her PTA, um, from the elementary school to write a letter in support. Um, Ellen, I don't know if the Friends would be interested. I can, I'll talk to you, I'll, I'll send you an email tomorrow. But maybe the Friends would want to send something in support of that. Um, so basically, you know, we're asking the city council to eliminate overdue fines, period, from, for all ages. Uh, um, you know, just to do it, period. So that report is written and has been approved by finance and the, and the city attorney and the city manager. Um, so that will happen next week. Um, our aid positions, yeah, sorry.
Um, you, you said, you, you started out by saying it's still on the agenda. Do you have any concern it's gonna drop off? Because this would be the best meeting to.
No, I think that it'll stay on usually, um, because the, the packet will have to be public, well, it was published, should be, have been published tonight. So.
I didn't see it there when I checked, but it needs something.
Yeah, it should have been published tonight. And as of Tuesday, there was no indication that they felt the need to move it again. So I think that it's there. Um, I, I'll check the packet and make sure it is. But as of Tuesday, there was no, no plan to, to move it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the aid positions, uh, we have the last two of the five starting. Um, someone's starting next week and I think someone else is starting the following week. So we'll have, uh, all 10 aides, which will be great. Um, a lot of our full-time librarians and the part-time librarians too. But the full-time librarians have been kind of doing double duty, managing the takeout window. Um, and they have a lot of other things that we need them to do. So it will be great to have more aides so that we can have some aides working that takeout, uh, station and have the librarians doing other duties. Um, the, the mobile app, we are still in the process of, of launching it. We have a test, a beta version that we're testing now. Um, it needs some updates and some changes already. I, I, I haven't done a thorough testing, but I can see already there are some things that aren't, uh, configured the way we expected them to be. But it looks really good. Um, it looks nice. And I think that people are gonna be really happy with that functionality once it's live. So coming soon, I would say in the next couple of weeks probably, depending on, uh, the vendor's schedule and our ability to get our testing done. Um, Rick Thomas's materials, we purchased those. Those are on site. So, um, Olivia has those and, um, you know, we'll start working through them at her, you know, fit that in with the rest of her workload. Um, if you're interested, I can ask her to give us a, an, an estimate of kind of the timeline and what she's working on. She's got, she's just got a lot of, uh, irons in the fire, but, uh, definitely, um, has a plan to start working on these materials. So that was exciting to get them and get to look at them a little bit. That was fun to see them. Um, let's see, what else did I want to tell you? I think that, um, that's it. I want to thank, uh, for One City Many Stories, which was, you know, we, we bit off a lot. I'm not gonna say more than we could chew, but it was a lot and we learned a lot, I think. Um, we may, if we do it again, we may do it a little differently. But I think that it was a, a really great program. And I think, and I want to thank Bianca who participated in, in many of the book discussions. Um, and of course, Ron, um, Curci, who wrote a poem for us and who, you know, was our moderator on our really wonderful panel, uh, discussion, which, uh, it was really fantastic. It's available to watch if you, if you have a spare hour. I highly recommend watching that. So it was, it was a lot of fun. And I think that, um, the staff definitely, we definitely learned a lot. And it was a really good project, I think, for this team because, again, these are new staff. So to have Maida lead that team and, and do this project was, I think, a good learning experience for all of us. So that was, um, nice to, to do it and nice to wrap it up because it took up a lot of time and energy for a long time. So it's sort of like, we kept saying, okay, after One City Many Stories, we'll do whatever, after One City Many Stories. So now that's, that's here. So we're on to other things, which is good. Um, and again, thanks to everyone for your support of the Bradbury Windows. Really exciting to have those here. And, um, thank you to the Friends for being willing to accept donations for that purpose. And, um, really exciting that we have those here. And I thank all of you for your support for that. That took us a long time to get there, but, but we got there. So, so that's great. And that's, that's all I have. Unless, does anybody have questions about, oh, I guess I should, let me mention, um, uh, in terms of reopening and all of these sorts of issues, you know, as you, as you know, the, the, you know, virus is, is worse, not better. So, um, Altadena is, um, open for some very limited in-person services. And Alhambra is open for some very limited in-person services. They're doing like 30-minute appointments. I don't think it's by appointment, but it's 30 minutes is all you're allowed inside. There's no seating. There's no sitting down. So again, they're basically letting people in to browse and use computers. Um, and we're still focused on the computer piece. And we, uh, met, um, Monday, Maida and I met with the vendor that is setting up the web-based reservation, computer reservation, uh, platform. And, uh, we're kind of at a, we need to work with our IT team here in the city on this. There's some security issues that they're gonna need to weigh in on that we, we didn't know about until we met with the vendor on Monday. So we found that out on Monday and, um, have reached out to IT to, to try to get through that so that we can get that up and running, um, and finalize exactly how that's gonna work and, and how we're gonna manage that and staff that and make that a safe thing. But that's really where our focus is. Um, we're not, um, focused right now on letting people in to browse materials, although we are starting to reach out to vendors. Really, in order to let people in, we need to change the way we're doing takeout. So we really need to get, um, shelving installed on the wall that's across from the, the service desk. So we're reaching out to some shelving vendors to start that ball rolling at least. Um, and, and find out what that's gonna cost and what our options are. And, and then hopefully we can move forward with that. And, and when the time is right, be able to let people in for some browsing.
This, that, that, again, and this brings up my earlier piece. As we go forward and we purchase things, maybe it can be things on wheels. So like if you're gonna buy new cabinetry, I don't know if it's feasible, but if it can be done on wheels.
That's a good question.
Things like this happen, to happen again. We have to move walls or move things around. It would be easier moved.
Yeah, that's a good question. I hadn't thought of it for the, that, I mean, our intent had been to put shelving there anyway. I mean, that's always been our intent, to put the new book shelving there. Um, so I think we would need shelving on that wall no matter what we were doing. But, um, but that's a good, good question of whether that's a good place for mobile shelving. Uh, we can definitely look at that option. Yeah.
Kathy, um, maybe I missed it, but did, did you mention that the status of the staffing? Were you able to, you were in the middle of bringing people on? Did I miss it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, we, we had five, we had had five aide vacancies. Three of them are, are filled and the other two, one is starting next week, one is starting on the 18th and one is starting on the 23rd. So all, all five of those are, are filled, which is, is great news for us. So we're really excited about it.
Right. Um, in terms of the, uh, One City One, uh, Many Stories, um, have you captured the lesson learned from a debriefing or anything like that on a go-forward basis? Just a memorandum or?
We, we haven't had our debrief yet. We're, we're going to have it and we will capture it. Yeah.
Right, right. And, and the last thing, I did take a quick peek at the agenda. It is out there now for the, uh, city meeting. And it's item 13 on the agenda.
Yay.
Yay.
Yeah, finally, that's another one that's like, you know, been talking about it for a long time. So.
Three years.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good, good.
Good.
All right. Are there any other, uh, questions for Kathy? Any other concerns, comments? All right. Well, then I think we'll adjourn the meeting at, are we all, everybody, no other comments or questions then?
We're good.
All right, then we'll adjourn the meeting, um, at, uh, 8:14. And yes, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be, be safe and healthy. And our, the next meeting will be on December 10th, same virtual. And our, the next meeting will be on December 10th, same virtual setup, same time. So be, be safe and happy, and, oh, and, and as you all know, Measure U passed, UUT passed. So that was, that was nice. And hopefully some, when they finalize the voting, we'll know a little bit more about the council members too. I think that's not all put in.
It's not certified yet, yeah.
Not certified yet. They haven't, until November 30th. All right, so good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Yes, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.